I would like to call our January 22nd, 2019 council meeting to order and I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
He's calling mine, yes.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum present. If you will stand for the prayer and pledge with me. And everyone, if you will bow your head. "Gracious Lord, we thank you on tonight for your grace and your mercy. We thank you for this day and all that it has been, all that you have given and all that you have shown. Thank you for these thou your servants who have taken and put their hand to the plow to serve these thou your people. In Jesus' name we do pray." And everyone say, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
I miss my running mate next to me tonight. I almost got tongue tied without Walter next to me overpowering me a little bit with the pledge. I would like to invite Mr. Barry Jarrett and Ms. Jeanette Crawford up front for a presentation, please.
Mayor, is it okay if I stand right over here?
Yes, sir. How can I say no to Mr. Jarrett? Yeah, I'm gonna let you stand right there. Okay, and how does...
Jeanette?
Jeanette? No, I'm saying... Alright, some of them have those funny names. Tonight, we have a presentation to Ms. Jeanette Crawford and Mr. Barry Jarrett. It's from the Georgia Association of Water Professionals, better known as the Georgia W. Water...let's get this right, the Georgia Water Professionals. It's a not-for-profit organization that educates its members, provides professional development for water treatment managers, and promotes sound public policy in managing water resources and related environmental fields. The Georgia Water Professionals has recognized the contributions of Barry Jarrett and Jeanette Crawford and awarded them with the Lifetime Achievement Award acknowledging both for their 30-year membership and their individual services to the organizations. So I'm presenting a lifetime membership presented to Jeanette L. Crawford in recognition for 30 years of service, and Mr. Jarrett has his. He didn't bring it with him tonight, but the presentation is for both of them.
Since Jeanette's... Mayor, since Jeanette's only 29, how is this possible?
Let you choose, Jeanette.
You got it wrong.
I ain't saying anything about you, ma'am.
That's a good question, Mr. Steve. I'm gonna have to let you answer that one. I'm so glad to see everybody out tonight that came out. It just doesn't seem like it's been a year already, but it has been a year, a full year already. So on tonight, let me say, as I began to present our 2019 State of the City address to you guys, let me address first and foremost our city councilors, honored guests, friends, and neighbors. It is an incredible honor and in this time to be the mayor of Millisville and to be able to be before you to speak about the state of our city. Before I begin, I would like to thank, first and foremost, I cannot go without saying thanking God because this is the reason why I'm your mayor, and I give credit to him each and every day. My family for their continued and invaluable support. And what can I say about this dream team up here? I think I said at our last council meeting that if I had to go on the field, what better teammates would I ask for than this team sitting right up here before me? And I'm thankful for them because they inspire me to want to be a better mayor. So I'm thankful. Thank you, guys. Millisville, we are blessed to have an outstanding, I mean outstanding, city manager who runs this city with a budgetary proficiency with the help of his A-Team. Where's his A-Team at? I see some of...I'm wearing a new pair of glasses and therefore reading only. So if I'm looking at you a little crazy tonight, it's okay. Okay. He has a wonderful A-Team, his wonderful city employees, your excellency and professionalism...excuse me, I can't talk tonight either. Professionalism exemplifies the heart of a city, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Ray Parker Jr. created a song that stated, "When there's something strange in your neighborhood, who are you gonna call?" Well, he said Ghostbusters, but we say Jimmy J. We call Mr. Jimmy Jordan of Jordan A. Adams Mathis, P.C. So thank you, Mr. J., for putting up with us when you just want to say, "Now, look, y'all. Y'all just need to make a educated decision and go home." So thank you, because I saw that in you tonight as well. And to all of our citizens, I thank you because without you guys, I wouldn't be the mayor. Without you all's support, we wouldn't be representing you guys, and we want to do the best possible job to represent you all each and every day. And so we want to be as forthcoming and as transparent as possible for you all. So let's begin by doing a quick review, a quick year-end review. Let me share some of the accomplishments with you. With 2 million combined funding from Georgia Department of Transportation, local maintenance, and improvement grant, the Georgia Department of Transportation, Central State Hospital Street Network Improvement Funding, as well as SPOSS proceeds, we completed the largest resurfacing and paving projects in the city's history. We paved over 12 miles in 2018. That's mean for y'all to clap right there. From Ivy Weaver Road to streets inside of CHS, we improved connectivity to off-campus thoroughfares and support public and private partners in redevelopment of Central State Hospital campus and for the betterment of the city. So far in 2019, we have received $207,278 in additional local maintenance and improved funds that will continue to combine with additional local funds for future paving projects. The Streetscape IV included finalizing the bidding and awarding process for Streetscape IV, which will complete our street and sidewalk improvement project for the 100 blocks of West Green Street, South Wilkinson Street, and West McIntyre Street, continues with tremendous results. Work on the Streetscape project has already begun, as you have most likely seen, in the 100 block of West Green Street. The total cost of this project will equal $1,200, $1,208...I'm sorry, $1,200, with $800,000 coming from the Federal Department of Transportation and $400,000 being funded by local funds. This beautification included installing LED lighting in the new construction as well as LED lighting through downtown. This is also in partnership with Georgia Power. The conversion will provide more reliable and efficient fixtures that create the potential to save the city in energy costs while providing better lighting for pedestrians and property safety throughout the city. Upon completion, all Millisville-on-street light fixtures, along with other areas of downtown, upgraded, will be upgraded to LED fixtures. While we are talking about improvements, I am also proud of our infrastructure improvements in the Riverview neighborhood. These improvements have been funded by a $678,000 CDGB grant. The Community Development Block Grant Program is a competitive, flexible program that provides communities with resources to address a wide range of unique community development needs. This funding must be matched with local funds, which for this project has so far included a total of $67,000 in local funds. This work will ultimately replace and improve the sewer infrastructure in the area of the city. Much of the infrastructure in our city is contained as part of the water and sewer system that runs throughout the city limits of Millisville as well as to some areas outside the city limits. These improvements have been funded by the Community Development Block Grant Program that addresses the unique community development needs. These grant resources will be used to replace and improve the sewer infrastructure in that area of the city. The city is always seeking to fulfill its primary water system mission of providing safe drinking water and water with adequate pressure to all water customers on a continuous basis. Another goal for our water system is to provide adequate water under adequate water pressure to fire protection and providing sufficient water for all commercial and industrial customers. This is why I am proud of two major accomplishments of our water system during 2018. Two major accomplishments of our water system during 2018 was the utilization of a $530,000 Georgia Environmental Finance Authority loan to replace a high-service line delivery pump at the Lamar Hamm Water Treatment Plant. First, the replacement of this pump enables better distribution of treatment water to the city's water customers for use in their homes and businesses. The water system also secured a Georgia Environmental Finance Authority loan in the amount of $3 million for the completion of the engineering study and development of plans for the construction of a new water treatment plant. This new plant, when operational, will replace both the Lamar Hamm and James Ball Treatment Plants that are currently in service. The second reason that I'm most proud is the engineering firm, Godwin Mills and Kwood...Kwood has been hired to develop the design for the new water treatment plant, which should be completed during this year. Along with the water treatment and distribution program, the city also operates the Water Pollution Control Plant, also sometimes called the Sewer Treatment Plant. During 2018, that plant treated 1,067 million gallons of sewage and also disposed of 2,490,850 gallons of sewage brought in by septic haulers from other areas of the county and the region. The plant's capacity, management, operations, and maintenance programs inspected 96,679 feet or a little over 18 miles of sewage lines that also included inspections of 438 manholes. Public safety is an important service that we provide to our citizens as well as those who pass through our city. As a part of the means to do this, in 2018, the Millisville Police Department received a $9,900 grant from the Georgia's Governor Office of Highway Safety to be used for the Highway Safety Visibility Enforcement Program and the Washington's EMC Operational Roundup Program. These grants, resources were used to purchase six new radar units to add to an aging stock of radars. The units cost a total of $1,650 each, and the remaining funds were used for officer's training. Both the grant and this award will be used to hopefully reduce speed-related traffic accident and injury-related accidents. And if I'm not mistaken, it was also this year that our K-9 received, K-9 of the Year. Falcon and Officer Link received the award as well. Our Fire Department continues to look for ways to better protect our citizens and visitors. In 2018, they completed a comprehensive hydrant inspection program that will be utilized for the internal and external audit for completion of the department's ISO rating evaluation. This rating evaluation has the potential to save city residents and business owners on their property insurance rates for further proving this was time well spent. In the city, Geographical Information System Office, the GIX Office, will aggregate and catalog data for future planning and tracking. The GIS Office has already converted the water department's CAD drawings to GIS layers and prepared program for data collection efforts using GPS equipment. Additionally, online GSI...GIS layers have been created for the Fire Department to collect fire hydrants not previously mapped and inspected hydrants, all in efforts to improve the Insurance Service Office rating for the city. And on the other hand, the city of Millisville, for the first time in our history, if I'm not mistaken, employed our first African-American Fire Chief in 2018, Chief William Carrier, who's also sitting here. Wait, that is Chief Carrier. I don't know what area Mr. Tim Thomas comes up under, but we also had our first African-American Public Works Director, which is Mr. Tim Thomas. We also had some city parks upgrades this year, and during 2018, in partnership with the Georgia Department of Corrections, funding was allocated for a total of $34,400 to complete two new pavilions, one at Hughley Park and the other one at Central Park. Additionally, in 2019, we will see the completion of the design and construction of new monument identification signs at both parks. And on Monday, we did the unveiling of Hughley Park at 10:30 a.m. You might have saw that on Channel 13 or WXA News on Monday. And we have unveiled or will be unveiling the Central City Parks soon. So what's new in 2019? You will also see new gateway signage as you enter into the city limits as well as finding way signage. This is accomplished through grant fundings received by the Downtown Development Authority, Millisville Main Street, and $2,000...and a $2,000 Knight Cities Fund for Millisville Grant that was received from Central Georgia Community Foundation. I want to acknowledge the Downtown Booster Grant in 2018 and its effort to improve the appearance of our city with another $2,000 to help with the enhancement of our downtown businesses sponsored by the Downtown Development Authority, Millisville Main Street. Thank you very much for your contribution. This is funded through private investors and business owners who care about our town. Additionally, the program approves for a 50/50 facade match grants throughout the year, generating another $10,304 in our downtown improvements. The city finances continue to be well managed and is evidenced by the fact that the city budgets for all funds, local, state, and federal, were prepared, adopted, and submitted to the appropriate authorities before the state mandated deadline, and the city's pension fund maintains a level of funding that surpasses state funding averages for municipalities with defined budget benefits pension programs. With comprehending budgeting and forecasting, the city continues to maintain pension funding levels in the 90% range. While the city is committed to our citizens, we are also committed to our employees. In 2018, we received an 8,000 employee health and well-being incentive grant from the Georgia Municipal Association. The grant is used to promote worksite programs designed to enhance the health and well-being of city employees and family members. And finally, in an effort to improve city information sharing for better service to the community, we partnered with the Middle Georgia Regional Commission to develop a new citywide website that should be up and running by the end of this month. Is that correct, Mr. Jarrett? By the end of this month. This new website will streamline the city's digital information delivery and service. It is anticipated, it is anticipated the new site will go live during the first quarter of 2019. As I told you at the beginning of this time, we were, we have been very busy in 2018, and so we, and so were many of our partner agencies that we funded and worked with on a daily basis. Those included Allied Arts, who saw over 3,000 concert members, and 700 workshops in partnership with Millisville Main Street and First Friday Events, Marla House Gallery Art Exhibits and House Tours, over 4,000 visitors, the Twin Lakes Library System and City Partner to renovate the City Hall Annex East, the old Fowler or Boyer's Motor Center building. The renovation will provide space for the annex for the downtown library as well as some city offices and other spaces. The Twin Lake Library System, 2.5 million, over five years wrapped around building grant to combat illiteracy in partnership with the Ball County School District, Georgia College, and communities and schools. The Twin Lakes Library System also welcomed over 120,000 visitors and circulated over 150,000 books, audiobooks, and DVDs in 2018, as well as having over 1,100 participants in our summer reading program. And this is why we try to make sure that we at the city, we're doing our part to ensure that we're gonna do everything possible to work with the county to make sure that the library is secure, to rest and make sure that you all know that we're doing what we can so that you won't have to worry about the library. And lastly, the Central State Hospital Redevelopment Authority received approval of a USDA building and industrial loan for $10 million that when coupled with $6.1 million in private funding will fund the Georgia International Food Center. Now, the formal Palm Kitchen project will be combined with over 15 private partners, either currently on campus or who have purchased property and plan to provide capital investment, all of which have created new jobs that exceed 375 total. I could go on and on, but I would just end with a quick mention of other projects on the horizon in 2019. Through a Department of Natural Resources Recreational Trail Program Grant and a Federal Transportation Enhancement Grant in conjunction with the O'Connor River Greenway Authority, the Fishing Creek Community Trail will be expanded and extended from South Elbert Street to Central City Park. Completion of the housing study and examination of needed changes in the planning and improving process of, for housing and additional changes, downtown improvements to include new businesses as well as place-making additions and improvements. The city will be working with GDOT during the coming year to improve some areas of the city regarding vehicular traffic flow. We will be, we will be working to decrease blighted property, completion of a stormwater audit and evaluation of current infrastructure, and finally, the completion of application for a new CDBG funding request. I am going to end this speech the way I began, thanking this team of the city councilors, the city employees, and community partners. All that I've shared tonight could not have been accomplished without them. Again, I say thank you. We've had a great 2018, and I look forward to an even better 2019. So, as Mr. Mullins would tell us every time we get ready to open up our meeting, let's go to work. Thank you. Trying to get you ready. Okay. Y'all have received a copy of the January 8th, 2019 council meeting minutes and had the opportunity to review various closed session meetings. Are there any corrections? Do I hear a motion to adopt the minutes?
So move.
Second. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. There's no old business on the agenda tonight, so I will move to new business and ask the clerk to read ordinance 1901-01 by caption as a first reading.
An ordinance meaning, ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millisville, Georgia, ordinance rezones property located at 1200 North Elbert Street, also known as 1209 North Jefferson Street, from SFR 2 to PD Plan Development.
I am assigning the ordinance to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll ask the clerk to read ordinance O-1901-02 by caption as a first read.
An ordinance amending, the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millisville, Georgia, ordinance rezones part of property located at 300 Pearl Drive, containing approximately 12.118 acres from CC to MR2.
Okay, and I'm also assigning this ordinance to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the final first reading is ordinance O-1901-03, and I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance amending, the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millisville, Georgia, ordinance rezones part of property located at 300 Pearl Drive, containing approximately 8.575 acres from CC to SFR.
And I'm assigning that ordinance to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The next item on the agenda is resolution R-1901-03, and I will ask the clerk to read the resolution by caption, please.
To authorize the first amendment to the tower lease agreement with T-Mobile South LLC on the water tower located at 139 Robertson Mill Road.
Just call for the motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the request.
Clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
On here, we've got two things that's numbered, R, 1, 9, and 3.
One is a resolution. Madam, one is ordinance, one is resolution.
Okay.
Okay, shoot. Okay, resolution is approved.
Do you know 1-6 now?
No. Four. Okay, we add them. Okay. I don't have this on this...okay, um, next item on the agenda is resolution R... Okay, um, next item on the agenda is Resolution R-1901-04. I need the clerk, will you, uh, read this by caption, please?
Resolution authorizing referendum on the question of extending the hours of Sunday that certain alcoholic beverages licensees may sell to still spirits or alcoholic beverages for beverage purposes by the drink and for other purposes.
That's what I'm lost in. Okay. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. The final resolution we have on the agenda tonight is R1901-06, and I'll ask the clerk to please read the resolution by caption.
Resolution of the City Council of Millisville, Georgia, requesting the Housing Authority of the County of DeKalb, Georgia, to exercise extraterritorial powers within the City of Millisville for the purpose of financing a proposed multifamily housing project.
You have heard the resolution, can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. We do have, let me make sure I'm in place here. We do have one alcohol license that received its final approval this morning. This is a change in the license holder for Pigly Wiggly. I will ask the clerk to please present the application.
This is for Michael Craig Nelson on behalf of HAC Incorporated, doing business as Pigly Wiggly, located at 731 Wayne Street, and this is for beer and wine retail package to go.
Hey, you've heard the application, is there a motion to approve?
There's a motion. Second.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
License is approved. It is time for us to appoint a mayor pro temp. The chair will entertain a motion to nominate a member of council to serve as pro temp for 2019. Need a nomination.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Steve Chambers as our mayor pro temp for 2019 calendar year.
Second.
A motion and a second has been made, I ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
I modestly abstain.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
The appointment of the pro temp is confirmed, Mr. Steve Chambers, for another year. I'm not gonna make that mistake and say four years tonight. All right. We have a few appointments to make, to the Project Review Committee tonight, and these all are, these, these are all new appointments. The Project Review Committee is tasked with reviewing the applications for the revolving loan fund created to expand the economic opportunities for persons of low or moderate econ, econ, income within the City of Millisville by providing flexible and expedient funding at the local level. And I would like to nominate Willie Davis Jr., Missy Swigert, Verna Josie, Tim Thomas, and Tyrone Evans to serve on this advisory committee. Do I hear a motion to confirm these nominations?
So moved.
Second.
And ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Appointments are confirmed. And finally, I would like to nominate Mac Patel to the Economic Development Authority. Do I hear a motion to confirm the nomination? So moved.
Second.
I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
I abstain because I don't know him.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
The appointment is confirmed. This concludes the agenda items for tonight's meeting.
Madam Mayor, before we go further, because we went through it so fast, and I just wanted to ask one question for clarification when I was reading the resolution for housing authority. So then, and, and this is for Ms. Jarrett, so the name of Graham Homes, am I reading this correctly? Graham Home Public Housing Apartments will now be known as Orchard Hill Landing? Okay.
And one thing I would like to add, Mayor, to that, when we're going to appoint somebody, I'd like to get information on him, so that I have a chance to-
You do have it.
We do have it.
Just for clarification, this particular resume for Mr. Patel was submitted several months ago. We're just now putting him on the committee, but we did get this in our boxes several, several months ago, over a year ago, probably. And, and he's just getting, there's just become a vacancy to put him on. But if you- He manages Hampton Inn and La Quinta Inn in Sweet, so, he's very interested in economic development here in Bowen County, but it was submitted to us some time ago.
Any other discussion?
That's it for me.
All right. There's no other business to discuss, meeting adjourned.